All right. Good morning. We are here for the work session, special work session for January 9th, 9:00 AM. We have our appointment with Fly Casper Alliance and Sky West for the purpose of Sky West discussion and the MRG. So, welcome. Come on up, whoever wants to come up. Yeah, if it's green.
Green, we're good.
So, so welcome. Would you introduce yourselves just one more time?
Yes, I'm Casey Weida. I am the board chair for Fly Casper Alliance, and this is Daniel Belmont. He is the Director of Market Development for Sky West Airlines.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, I would just let you guys tell us what you think we need to know, and I'm not sure if one more commissioner is going to join us, but I wanted to keep us, you know, starting on time. So, maybe you just give us a little background, and then maybe we can ask some questions of you guys.
Sure.
Great.
I know that when we've come and asked for MRGs, you guys have had some questions, and that there were questions that we weren't capable of answering, and so we thought it would be important to have Daniel come and talk to you so that you could have your questions answered and understand a little bit more about the need for the MRG from the perspective of the Delta connection through the regional carrier, Sky West, and to learn a little bit more about, you know, how that this is impacting their, all of their overall routes, and to learn, just so that you can be more informed about why this is important to our community as an economic driver. I think you've probably all heard that Fly Casper Alliance had requested a study from the state of Wyoming in the latter part of 2023 to look at the ROI on the MRG from June of 2022 through July of 2023. And that ROI was a little over $11 million for one year. And of course, that's money coming back to the economy in Neutona County. And I think that's very significant. It was just this Sky West flight was the only thing they looked at. They did not look at any of the, I'd say, the Delta Connection flights. They didn't look at any of the United Express flights. So, it's a pretty significant economic value to the community.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have heard those numbers. However, are those numbers broken out as to where that money is actually returning back into the community? Which part of it? How that is actually influenced? And because I know in our general fund, we haven't seen that much money come back in. I'm not saying that that's not an accurate statement, but I want to know where it's going to. And part of my concern is that the other entities need to be stepping up and paying part of that. This money is the majority of that money is going into the city of Casper. The city of Casper needs to be picking up part of that responsibility because that economic development is going back into Casper and not just the county. So, I don't know of a single hotel that's actually located inside the county that's not inside of a municipality already. There's a lot of other things that are associated with that, and I'd like to know if that, if you have breakdown of that.
I have a little bit of a breakdown of it. So, how it's calculated is they start by looking at the operations at the airport. So, the salaries of all the people that work at the airport, they're affiliated with that particular flight, and the, all the money that that flight, each flight brings in from the, in this case, it would be the Delta connection to the airport. And then they have a calculation that they use that looks at how that trickles into the economy with how people buy groceries, pay their electric bills, pay their mortgages. And then they have a calculation for how many people come in as visitors, and I think they, and then they have a number that they use for the amount of money on average that every visitor uses. And that's how they calculate that. And I don't have very specific actual numbers for that.
Mr. Belmont, before we get to you, we're gonna keep on Fly Casper for maybe a few more minutes. Casey, I think last year we discussed you guys, or maybe it was Advanced Casper approaching the city of Casper on Commissioner North's point to see if we could get some significant material assistance from the city or other municipalities, or even private industry. It feels like the county is bearing the vast majority of the burden. Now, I understand the state's obviously a participant in this, which we appreciate. And Advanced Casper Fly Alliance is a participant in it too. But tell me, and maybe you can speak to the public about where those efforts are for approaching the city and private industry.
Well, we're meeting with the city later today so that Daniel can have an opportunity to speak with them. We have talked to the city last year. They did do some funding for Fly Casper Alliance to market the flights in and out of Casper. They didn't, chose not to participate in the MRG at that time. And of course, the private sector through Advanced Casper has been participating in the MRG, and I think that we've participated at $80,000. Is that right, Justin? And we're, and we're meeting with the Neutona County Improvement Committee later today also to make them more aware of the MRG and to garner some support from the, more from the private sector.
So, we've got to let him speak since he's here today and made, made the trip. My understanding is Sky West operates both the carriers, United and Delta, out of Casper. Is that correct?
Yeah, the Denver service sometimes changes hands between a different regional carrier. Sometimes it's us, sometimes it's them. But on the Salt Lake route, it's exclusively us.
So, can you help us and maybe the public understand, and you might need to adjust the microphone just so we can hear you a little better, what the difference is and why we have an MRG for the Delta flight but not the United flight?
Yeah. So, it might be helpful if I break down our business model a little bit to help you understand that. So, we have kind of two buckets of flying that we do with our partner airlines. And one of them is what we would refer to as contract flying, which is the majority of what we do. Over 90% of the flying that we do is, is this contract flying. And basically with that, we have a partnership with our, our partner airlines where we're basically the hired gun for them. We enter into a contract for a specific number of aircraft, and we provide the, the flight crews for that, the maintenance infrastructure, and basically show up and operate, operate the flights, you know, for and behalf of the partner airline. There's some mixed things there. Some, some of them we have ownership of, some of them we have a lease arrangement on. But yeah, essentially what it is, is we show up and operate the flight, and they play, pay us by the hour, basically. And so, we're indifferent to the route that we're operating on. We're indifferent to the fares that are being charged, or the number of people on the aircraft. We're just there to operate it and, and collect our hourly rate, so to say. And in that situation, the, the partner airline takes on all the, the risk of the flying. So, whether that plane is full or not, you know, how much the fuel is for, things of that nature. And so, that's, that's a very de-risked type of flying for us to do. Now, the other bucket that we have is what we recall or refer to as at-risk flying. And that's roughly probably somewhere around 8% of what we do. And in that situation, it's almost the opposite, where Sky West is more in the driver's seat of where we operate those aircraft, what routes they're on. We're more in charge of the fares that are charged, more concerned about how many people are on the aircraft. We take on the risk of the fuel. So, basically reversing roles from the contract flying. There's, there's still a partnership with, with the partner airline. So, in this case, Delta Connection, where we share some of the revenue with them. But by and large, we, we take on that risk for that flight. And so, that's, that's where these MRGs come in place, is we are trying to ensure that if we're in a market that is, you know, not quite there on the profitability, that we have a mechanism in place to de-risk that flight for us. I'll pause there. Kind of went on for a little bit.
No, that, no, that's great. I think that's super helpful information. How do you convince Delta to go from an at-risk relationship to this contract-based, contract flying? That's, that would be, I think, what Neutona County would love to see. How, do you, do you renegotiate your terms with Delta on, on a periodic basis? And what's the prospect for switching that to your more traditional model of contract flying?
Yeah, good question. I would say that the Delta, the Delta team, when they go to look at a contract market, they don't really involve us in that conversation. You know, we, we could broach them on, on the idea that ultimately they're the ones that are looking at their network of where they want to be and where they want to operate those aircraft and allocate those resources. So, there's, there's really not a lot of collaboration between us and them when it comes to determining, you know, what route's going to potentially transition to a contract market. It does happen from time to time. A lot of times, we'll be operating a route, and if it becomes very profitable, a very busy route for them, sometimes, you know, Delta might come in and look at that and say, you know, this route has really grown, and it's something that we could make money on. And they might say, you know, Sky West, let's, let's go ahead and transition this over to us. So, that, that does happen on occasion, but it's probably been a few years since we've had a route kind of make that type of transition. But usually, there's, there's a level of ridership and fares involved before Delta's going to really take a hard look at it.
So, ridership, is it about the 50% load right now? Is that where, where we currently are?
Yeah, right around, over the last few months, between about 50 and 55%.
And what's the United ridership load percentage factor? Those might not be the exact right words, but, but you understand what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, that's something I don't track as closely just because it's not a at-risk flight for us. So, we're, we're less involved in it. But my, my guess, it's in the 70 to 80% range if, if United's continuing to operate it.
But it seems to me that the biggest impediments for ridership on Delta, at least from my own experience and a few conversations I've had with others, the, the two components are number of flights. How many flights do we have, you know, that then allow people a little more flexibility in their travel? And currently, I think it's, is it just the morning and the night flight?
Correct. On the, on the Salt Lake route, yes.
And then the other is a cost situation. And at least it seems, from my experience and looking into it, that the United flight is almost always cheaper than the Delta flight. I don't know if that's, if that's, if there's any real basis, factual basis in that, or if that's just anecdotal observation. How do you get your prices down if, if what I'm saying is, is accurate, that the, the Delta flight costs a little more? How do you get it down?
Yeah. So, it's all about maximizing the revenue for the flight, right? And so, we've got a team, you know, back at St. George that handles these at-risk flights and is looking at the fares, trying their best to find that right price point to where it's not too cheap, and you're just filling up the plane with cheap seats versus a higher average fare that allows you to kind of strike that balance between maybe getting the aircraft 80, 85% full and just finding that price point that people are willing to pay. The, the airline pricing is, you know, very complex, obviously. There, there's a lot of variables that go on in there. But one thing that is of note is our, our people will price the flight from Casper to Salt Lake exclusively. But any connecting itineraries, so say, Casper going to LA, Delta Airlines will, will price that flight instead of us. And so, we, we kind of have some limited say in, in what those prices are. And, you know, Delta will, will take a look at these routes as well and make pricing decisions. But ultimately, they, they are trying to maximize revenue. So, if, if we see that it's kind of stuck at a, say, a 50, 55% load on that flight, then they'll start making adjustments on the various fares or the various, you know, buckets that fares fall into and things of that nature. So.
Commissioner North.
Mr. Belmont, I do have a question. I've asked Casey this in the past, and so I'm sure she knows it's coming. You do get revenue from those additional flights. What percentage of the passengers fly on past Salt Lake?
It's about 50%.
Okay. So, if that's about 50% of what you're looking at, how much additional revenue does that bring into Sky West versus from the flight that changes that flight cost? Because I've never seen that information, and I have asked for that. I want to, I would like to know what that, what that additional benefit to Sky West is and why the county is being asked to, or has been asked to, to supplement that when that additional revenue is coming into Sky West, even though you're, you may or may not be making that flight.
Yeah. So, when, when we compute the MRG figures, we just take any revenue that's coming in for that flight, whether it's passengers that are going from just Casper to Salt Lake. And let's say we get $100 just to throw around, figure out there. The proration is what we call it, of the, the passengers that are going beyond Salt Lake. We see less revenue from that. So, it might be $80 a passenger type of thing. But regardless of where they're going, you know, whether it's local or connecting on somewhere else, we, we take all that revenue into consideration when we report back the numbers to, to the county or, you know, the airport.
Okay. Well, I still haven't seen those numbers, and I would like to see what that, what that reference is.
So, Commissioner North, just so that we're clear, are you asking for the dollar amount on a quarterly basis that Sky West receives from the Delta and beyond, I'm sorry, the Salt Lake and beyond revenue?
Yeah. Because I want to know when we, it's like last January, the amount of money that we were asked as a county to pay was more than we've been paying for almost the full year prior to that. The cost to the county went up exponentially over this last year for each quarter. Each quarter, your request was substantially higher than it had been in the past, i.e. $440,000 a quarter. Whereas, the first time around, we made it approximately nine months off less money than that because our first request for an MRG was about $440,000. I think it was $441,000. That lasted for a substantially longer period of time.
Right.
So, there's, there's some numbers that I don't, that don't make any sense to me. They haven't made any sense to me because of the, the cost associated with it and everything else. And I would like to, I'd like to see where that breakdown is and what we're actually looking at. And I want to make sure that the county is actually getting what they're paying for.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me, let me just interrupt. If, if we could get that information that maybe provides the revenue from Salt Lake and beyond, that would be helpful. But I think what you're telling us is that it is included in your MRG calculation. Is, is that right?
That's right, yeah.
Well, what is the trend moving forward? Because I, I agree with Commissioner North that the Q4 request, 400 and some thousand dollars, is that what it was? You know, I, the trend is going like this, and it doesn't seem to be stabilized. And, and where are we headed? Because there is a point, I think, when the community really has to make some hard decisions, and, and I think we're getting pretty close. So, talk to me about what 2024 is going to look like.
Yeah, I would, I would say 2024 is, is going to be more of the same as far as the, the ask of the MRG. And that's mostly attributed to the cost side of the equation, where the, the industry costs have just continued to escalate over the last year or so. And a lot of that is due to pilot pay. You know, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we had to basically double our pilot pay to stay competitive with the, the industry standards. And the maintenance costs of the aircraft continue to go up with the labor and parts involved with that. And so, it's, it is a challenge, you know, I'll recognize for communities to continue to come up with the funds that we're asking for. But it's, you know, we're looking at these, each markets individually, and, you know, until you hit those loads around the 80, 85%, it's just going to be probably more of the same, where, where we're challenged to be profitable on the route. So, unfortunately, just to be candid with you, I don't expect much in the way of relief there. You know, the, the route will, will continue to grow, and hopefully that MRG number starts to come down as ridership increases or as average fares, you know, get, get in a position to help maximize the amount of revenue that, that we're realizing from the flight. But certainly, certainly can't sugarcoat it and say that this year is looking any better than, than what we've done previously.
Where did we end up for Q4? I know we, we had the ask, but where did we actually end up on? Did we max that out, or is there a carryover? You guys can get back to me, or Glenn can get back to me.
Yeah, I don't think we've seen those numbers yet.
Yeah, they're, they're just getting finalized. So, you, you haven't seen them just yet. So, they should be coming out this week, though.
Commissioner Freel, you're, any questions?
I'm just taking all this in. But, so, I do have a question. You know, it seems that the amount of money that gets asked to small communities like this, I mean, it, it is getting to a point that we're hearing a lot that people do not want the money paid anymore. But I understand what happens if, if one of these goes away. So, let me ask the opposite question. You know, our community pays quite a bit of money, but our ridership going to Salt Lake and then Salt Lake out everywhere else, is, is anything asked of Salt Lake itself? I mean, obviously, if we have people going there, and there's money going into their economy, or people going there that are taking connecting flights, making money for, for Delta, is anything asked on the other end? Why, why does it, I understand that you're servicing our, our community. If it's not profitable, then you wouldn't service the community. But at the same time, a bigger city that's making quite a bit of money off of it, what are they, are they asked at all to put any money into the pot to even half, to put money into it to keep this connection going?
Yeah, it's, it's not very typical for the hub that's receiving the, the aircraft and the passengers to really get involved in an MRG. It's something that, that could be asked for sure, but it's not, not the norm, I guess, for, for them to get involved with it.
Okay. I mean, that, it just, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me that the burden is put back onto a small community. Yes, you're servicing us. The ridership needs to be up. But you're servicing a community, and you're profiting from that. Salt Lake is, is making money on that. And if our people leave here and go to, to Salt Lake, and that's the end of their destination, it's the same thing. The amount of money that goes back in the community that, that gets paid out, that, you know, we just talked about, is happening there. So, why are they not being asked to, to pick up some of the burden is the, the biggest question I have. And then I think you made, you made a comment earlier that you gotta, you don't want to get to where your, your seats are too cheap, that you're just filling a plane full of cheap seats. Flip side of that is, if we're only filling half a plane right now, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't you lower those prices down and fill those planes, fill those cheap, with cheap seats? If it's gonna, at, at the end of that flight, if we're going to make more money, or more money's going to come in, and it's a less burden that comes back to the county, then why wouldn't you fill that plane with cheap seats?
Yeah. So, one of the, the tools that a, a revenue management analyst will use is targeting different groups of people, right? So, you've got your leisure travelers that are going to pay less and book further out. So, what they will typically do is take a, a fare, say, that's over 21 days out, or whatever it is, and make that fare a little cheaper so that you start filling up more of the plane ahead of time. And, and that's a tactic that, that we'll be using, you know, to try and get more passengers in. But as you look at the demand, you know, the business demand that's closer in, typically, those, those passengers are, you know, inelastic to, to the price to, to an extent, and that they will pay more to, to have the convenience of the flight, you know, booking something closer in for a meeting that they have. So, we will target different buckets of, of demand and try and adjust the price accordingly.
So, Casey, back to you. You sent the commissioners an email October 18th, and Fly Casp, it says, Fly Casper Alliance is working on more education for the community through a marketing campaign that we hope will sell more seats to help eliminate the MRG by making the route profitable. Bring me up to date, or bring us up to date on where that marketing campaign stands. And, and thinking outside the box, I think Commissioner Freel indicated maybe your marketing campaign should devote some attention to Salt Lake City and saying, here are the numbers. So, not only does it provide an 11 to 1 ratio for Neutona County, or the city of Casper, or our community as a whole, but what's it provide to Salt Lake? And, and just because it's not the norm, as you, you stated, you know, maybe are, were, are we the only other Delta connection or, or airport other than Jackson in, in the state of Wyoming?
That's right.
So, I mean, maybe there's something there. But, but bring us up to speed on, on where this marketing campaign is, please.
Yeah. So, we've been going out to community organizations, the Rotarys, Kiwanis, et cetera, and presenting, we have a presentation that we've been doing, to talk about the MRG and the importance of having more than one destination out of Casper, and why it's important for Casper to be connected to the two largest cities in our region. The bulk of those are just starting to happen now in January. We did a few before the end of the year. And we've done quite a significant social media campaign. We are running promotions through Visit Casper in Salt Lake City to come to Casper. An interesting call the other day from a guy who actually works at Alta who wants to come and ski. So, those promotion, it, it is reaching people in Salt Lake City, and we have some other people that have responded to that. I think that it's a great idea to deepen that a little bit more, and we can certainly do that. And that's been the, the bulk of our And that's been the, the bulk of our marketing campaign. We're really just trying to get out to the community and smaller groups and talk to people we've presented to, I think, the Kiwanis, Advanced Casper and the Neutrona County Improvement Committee. And we're, we're presenting to the two, or two of the Rotary Clubs this month. And that's what we're trying to do is just get the word out and educate people about why having service to both of the regional cities, larger cities in the region is really important to Casper.
So I challenge you to be a little broader in your reach. I think that a lot of the people we hear from are not members of Rotary, are not. You know, they're, they're folks living out in the rural portions of the community. And I think there are two, two things you guys need to be doing from a marketing perspective. One is Fly Casper, okay? But the other is, this is what, you know, the, the, the second carrier in, in Neutrona County means. And it's an educational thing so that, you know, the community, even if they can't support it, at least they understand it better. And, and, and I don't know if it's the norm for Sky West, but I, I, what kind of marketing or assistance to either Fly Casper do you guys provide in either, on either the educational piece or the let's fill seats with, you know, the, here's how great Delta is because, because it's a good product you guys have. And the, the Salt Lake City Airport's, you know, made a heck of a lot of great improvements. But can you help us with marketing seats on your plane?
Yeah, definitely. We, we tend to act in a, in a supporting role in, in this type of scenario with communities and, and kind of two main things that come to mind are, are we, we help review materials that go out and make sure the branding and, you know, images and verbiage and all that are, are in the branding guidelines of, of Delta Airlines. And so we, we, we tend to just work in a partnership with the community to do that. Another thing that we do is we can offer flight vouchers to get people on the aircraft and those could be used in the community as like a raffle or some giveaway or whatever the, the marketing entity feels is a good way to use those. And that, that's a good direct way to get people using the flight and, and seeing the benefit of it and, you know, spreading that good word of mouth type of thing, so.
We have some hands raised in the back. Come on up, Justin, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention in addition to the, oh, of course. Justin Farley, I head up Advanced Casper. The address you need then? I, I just. Okay. Well, you had to tell me people are watching. That's going to make me nervous. Right. They were watching until I got up here. I just simply wanted to add to the question about the marketing we've, that Sky West has generously given us vouchers. We've purchased some tickets as well and we are, we have a, filled out a, a, geez, a survey, thank you, so that we can collect data on that. And then we're giving away a package both to Salt Lake City, where we had a hotel year generously give a, give us rooms downtown Salt Lake City. And then we also have packaged in, from Salt Lake to Casper that then have tickets for an event at the Ford Wyoming Center and hotels here as well. So that's just an added to introduce both our markets back and forth.
I'll add that we do work with Sky West on all of our marketing materials and Mr. Belmont has been very helpful to us in setting us up with their team and we work very closely with them and making sure that we're within their marketing guidelines. And they've been really helpful to us on how our social media ads look and appear to the audience. So Sky West has been very, very helpful to us.
Commissioner, my, my name is Lou Gilliam with Visit Casper. I wanted to touch on something that Commissioner Nicolason and Commissioner North, you mentioned earlier in terms of the business community and then also understanding the impact that comes to our community. The survey is in partnership with the Casper Area Chamber of Commerce. And a big piece of that is to understand what our local business community and how they use that in terms of their employment and retention. We know that a lot of the oil and gas companies that are in Casper or in Mills in Neutrona County utilize that Salt Lake service to use West Coast employees on two week on, two week off type schedules. And in terms of losing this or keeping this service, we want to better understand how that impacts the business community and their employment. Should it go away, should it stay? And we're hopefully, hoping that the survey and the partnership with the chamber helps us better understand that. And then to your point earlier, Mr. Nicolason, that when we understand that better, we can better pitch and understand how to get the business community involved in this so that the ask is not solely on the county or the city. Should we stay there?
I, I appreciate that. And, and I appreciate the letters that you guys have submitted to us over the last year from, well, Mozier, from Scottsdale Mint, from the McGinley Orthopedic Innovations Group. And, and they have a lot of people utilize that, that Delta flight. But you know, having those folks continue to invest in Fly Casper and Advanced Casper, I mean, wherever, but if they do it financially, if they support it fiscally, that, that is really meaningful, putting your money where your mouth is. I, I, I appreciate you guys, Sky West, giving some vouchers. I, I think that's nice and you know, I, I think that you can put a nice package together. I don't know what the ROI is on that, what the versus we will pay five percent or 10% of your, of our marketing efforts to put seats, to fill seats on your planes. You know, that provides a little more stability and certainty. And, and I don't know if, if that's an option. Don't get me wrong, vouchers are great, but saying here we are making the request for the MRG, but we're trying to do our part, maybe more than some, some vouchers and some, you know, here's the branding, here's what the Delta logo looks like. Okay, great. Can Sky West put, you know, some real money into it? Not, not the majority of the advertising or marketing campaign funds, but, but at least something so that when our constituents are saying, you know, we are subsidizing private industry and we tell them about this eleven to one or thirteen to one ratio on ROI, we can also say you guys are investing, investing in that advertising and marketing. So I, I don't know if that's an option, but it's maybe a request of at least mine.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. It's something I can take back to our offices and, and have a conversation with, with our leadership to, to get that up and going. I think it's something that we could structure in just the contract that we have with you guys. And we've been doing that quarterly over the last little while. This latest one, we're, we're under a six-month contract. And so I think spelling it out in there would, would be a helpful course faction.
Mr. Chairman.
Just to say, Commissioner Freel, yeah, I, I have a copy of the Transportation Services Agreement and I, I would love to see it in there. And maybe folks can negotiate something. And I, I think that makes it a little more palatable for some of us. Yeah, Commissioner Freel.
Along the lines on marketing, and Casey, I may be way off base asking this and this may be something you need to ask Glenn, but it seems like the last probably three times that I've been out at the airport, kids flying in and flying out on Delta. It, it seems that when I go to the counter out there, I find the information I'm looking for for United, but I'm not ever seeing anything on Delta. And as far as like the screens themselves should, and I get it, it's a flight in at night and it leaves the next morning. So there's, but there's no information out there on it. It, it just seems that it's non-existent when you go out there to even, to even see anything that, that deals with, with the Delta connection itself. So I guess when we look at a marketing standpoint, I would like somebody to look into that. Maybe I'm just not looking in the right spot, but they're at the same counter and I'm just not seeing it. But if I'm not seeing it, everybody else that's going out there that's flying out of here, if they, if they stand there, they're probably thinking United's the only way in and out of here and not Delta. So I would really like to see whoever. And if that's Glenn, then maybe we need to have a discussion with him. But I would like to see that change so that at least when you show up at the airport, you know what your options are.
We're out of, yeah, we're out of batteries. We're done. No, I didn't have any other questions. Do the commissioners have any other questions at this point? You, you other folks that are here or Daniel, Casey, anything else you'd like us or the public to know about what your efforts are and what the services you provide are? I think with the media here and with this being on, on YouTube or whatever, you know, it's an opportunity for you to communicate with our, our community.
Well, despite the cost of the airline tickets, it's still a lot cheaper to actually fly out of Casper than it is to drive to Salt Lake City or Denver. And we have a, a cost analysis, I think we have it up on our social media. I will go look, but it adds somewhere between four and $500 to drive to Denver to the cost of whatever plane ticket someone is buying to fly out of Denver. And it costs somewhere between five and $800 to fly out of Salt Lake City as opposed to flying out of Casper if you drive to Salt Lake City. So you know, and we're trying to get those case studies out in front of people so that they can see what the real costs are that are involved in, in driving as opposed to flying local.
Commissioners, thanks for having me. Tyler Doherty with Visit Casper. So I just found the study that you had asked, I think initially Commissioner North. So the eleven-one return, seven hundred and change is direct spend towards the airline. And then the average spend for a guest traveling to the community is about 1,050. So the indirect spend there is about $350 to our community. That's what I think we would see within Neutrona County and then city limits, if you will. So just, I think we can share that, Casey, that study, yeah. But it breaks down. Beyond that, it doesn't say hotel, restaurant, anything like that, but that's what would be in the indirect spend. I would also like to, I guess, throw a question to Daniel, just to clarify to you all. I think a big question in what we've heard is there are a lot of communities across the country who are willing to for air service? It's on, okay. And I just have two. I, I know Laramie County recently committed 500,000 to their travel. And then a community I came from in Iowa, similar sized community to Casper, recently committed a million dollars for a six-month MRG just for a boutique hotel. And that was just for airline travel to Las Vegas for a Tuesday, Thursday airline. So I guess I would just throw the question to Daniel. Could you articulate the interest that you have for regional carriers to bring your services to their community? And how strong that is and what that typically looks like?
Thank you. Yeah, maybe just to comment on the environment that we're in right now as an industry. I think many are aware of, of a, a regional pilot shortage and the, the impact that's had on regional airlines' ability to, to operate flights. And it is true that there are so many opportunities across the country of, of communities that are looking for air service and frankly, just unable to secure anything at this time due to the, the constraint on regional airline resources. And so it, it's something that we deal with a lot every month, talking to various communities from around the country. And many of them are just, just clamoring to, to get air service improvements or, or get air service period to their communities. And it's, there, there's just so many opportunities out there and such limited resources to be able to reach all of these communities that are looking for air service. And so, you know, we're, we're glad to be in Casper. We're glad to have this partnership with you. It, it's something that, you know, takes both sides coming to the table to make work. And we are certainly appreciative of, of your all's support of the air service and, and, you know, putting dollars towards it and, and making it something that's viable. But yeah, to, to Tyler's point, it, it is a scarce resource right now and, and securing it is, is very problematic right now.
Well, let me, let me just follow up on that. It'd just be direct. Is the Delta service through Sky West viable without the MRG?
Yeah, to be very direct, it is not. It simply is not quite at a point where it stands up on its own without the, the minimum revenue guarantee funds. There, there's a handful of communities, you know, surrounding Salt Lake where we, we have similar agreements with. And so it's, it's not something that, that Casper is bearing on their own, but it, it's, I, I mean, to, I guess, get more directly to, to your question is, it does not quite stand up on its own just yet.
I just had, wanted to add one more thing. Fly Casper Alliance has started a scholarship fund through Casper College to offer scholarships to the aviation students at Casper College to help get them through the commercial airline pilot program faster so that we can help lessen this pilot shortage. So we are trying to be proactive from that perspective and do that with our community and educating our students here.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I did have a question for Daniel. What percentage? Oh, my name is Tasma Powers. I'm with Fly Casper Alliance. What percentage of communities that Sky West services for a Delta connection have an MRG in place?
Gotcha. Again, kind of going back to those, those two different categories of flying that we do, the contract and the at-risk. So I, I'll, I'll direct the, the answer towards those at-risk communities since I can't speak for all of the contract flying. But every single one of the at-risk Delta communities that we operate in has some form of subsidy, whether that's through the essential air service program with the federal government or whether it's something with the community, you know, the county, the city, the state, some combination of that. The, the one exception to that is St. George, Utah, our, our Salt Lake service is not subsidized. And that's primarily just due to the loads being there, the average fares being high enough to sustain that on their own.
And, and my understanding on, along those lines is that every airport in the state of Wyoming either provides through its, its, from one source or another, state or local county funds, some support for whatever carrier is there, Delta or United. So. Okay, I think unless there are other questions, I don't have anything else. So thank you so much for making the trip. Thanks for coming in, everybody, and we appreciate it. And we'll just keep in touch, I know, with Fly Casper Alliance. And anytime, and, and with Glenn out at the airport, and anytime you need something from county commissioners or you want to visit with us, please just, just let us know and we'll be happy to have you here again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will adjourn the meeting.